It's a long time to a Christmas.
I am.
Right.
I am recording.
All right, I'm getting right on here. All right, is everyone ready? Call the meeting to order, stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. It does not look like we have any public discussion here.
No, there's no hint, hint poll either, so.
Okay, I didn't think, I didn't think I missed anyone walking in. So, we can go to the agenda minutes, is there any? Anything anyone saw on the minutes, otherwise I would, or the agenda, otherwise I'd entertain a motion to any effect here?
I'll, I'll move to approve the agenda.
Okay.
Ten minutes, excuse me, I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor, is there any discussion? Uh, roll, or, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay, motion carried unanimous. We had the safety committee meeting minutes in our packet. Is there any? Questions, comments about them?
Are you on that now?
Um, yes.
Okay.
I was not able to make the last one, I didn't know about until just the day before.
Yep.
Donna said she didn't have any updates, so she probably.
Okay. So, so we can acknowledge safety committee minutes, is there anything for wellness? Okay.
Will you sign this one and then this page?
Anything for wellness, otherwise we can acknowledge them. Quarterly reports is next up, um. Anyone have any questions, or do you have anything you wanted to say on that? Otherwise.
Pretty self.
Pretty standard, standard stuff?
You want to acknowledge this?
Or past public discussion?
I'm just listening. I'm just listening.
Okay. Um. Any motion for the quarterly reports? I'd move to approve the quarterly reports, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion on the motion? We need a roll call vote on that.
Jerks. Jerks?
Yes.
Black jerk?
Yes.
Math?
Yes.
Stecker?
Yes. And these don't need stamp, right?
No, but those do.
Just like.
That one's just you.
Sorry, trying to get my caffeine. Uh, go with some of these.
So just the one spot, do you?
Yeah, just the one spot.
Um. Next up is a liquor license for North Cassuth Golf Club, I make a motion to approve.
I'll move to approve.
You'll second?
Yes.
Okay, I'll, I'll make motion, Roger, second. Any discussion? Uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried unanimous. Next up is the liquor license for bottom of the cup. Is there any, is a motion to approve that?
I'll make some motions.
Okay, have motion on the floor, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any further discussion?
That's the one James Burns has north of Oak Lake there, I think.
That, that.
Or the cross maybe.
Target range or whatever that is.
Something like that, yeah, or golf.
Golf, I'm sorry, golf.
Yeah.
That's it, it's golf.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried unanimous. All right. Phil, you are next up for EMS employee.
Yeah, we, um, made an offer and accept, uh, for follow the guidelines of the county for hiring, um, practices. We hired, we made an offer to Mr. Mac Taylor. Uh, he will be joining us as a full-time EMS staff. Uh, Mac comes from, he's originally from the Mason City area. I've been working over in Spirit Lake with, um, Lakes Area EMS over there, decided to come back a little closer to home. Uh, Mac is an EMT, just finished his paramedic school, so he's in the process of testing out to become a paramedic, so. Young guy, be a nice asset to our service, to our area, to our community and. I'd like you guys' approval to. Very hard for us to hire.
Right.
Do you need his wage approved now?
Um, his starting wage will be twenty-one dollars an hour.
I would entertain a motion to hire, Roger, okay?
I'll second.
And a second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thanks.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried unanimous, thanks Phil. There's that. Matt Taylor, okay, um.
I should ask Phil, I'm better, how, how close are we to being fully staffed?
Um.
Or how many we have left?
I think we're probably not quite there, I think we might have one or two more left, maybe? Yeah, I'll have to double check on that. Do you want to call Doug up here? Then we can talk on secondary road.
Good morning Doug, we're ready for you in the boardroom.
Thank you.
I don't think you were all here when I said that, um, our eleven o'clock well, well mark. Rates is going to be teens, um, because the weather, she didn't know she'd be able to drive this morning, so Doug set it up to be teens.
Okay, that's fine.
It was a little slick coming in this morning, I was surprised it's there.
Did she get information sent to us, we can have?
I don't know, Doug took care of all of that, so.
We can ask him here. Is there any?
Good morning Doug.
And we're up to the, um, discussion for adding Christmas Eve as a holiday for the secondary road. Bargain, collective bargaining unit?
Yes, uh, I, I put this on the agenda, asking the board to, uh, take formal action on, uh, adding. December twenty-four, twenty-twenty-four to the paid holiday, holiday list in the secondary road collective bargaining unit. The board has a contract with the, uh, with the secondary road department and, um. Upon my visitation with Renee Von Bolkren, uh, she thought, uh, she agreed that, uh, this should be taken care of with a formal resolution. So I'm asking the board to take care of that. I just resolution, um. Yeah, I, I guess I don't know if anybody included it in your, your folder, so.
I did, I just mentioned the board earlier this morning, I did speak with Renee, uh, as well this morning, she, uh, got, got hold of her. And she was suggesting, um, that we wait a week, have some budget discussions in regards to bargaining unit. If we were going to do anything different with wages or anything and, and present it all in one, at one time, so if that, that's okay with you?
Well, I don't understand. My role, my job description is to administer things and why? A board member would go, I mean, why don't you appoint yourself county engineer, Carter?
Doug, I don't think that's appropriate.
I mean, no, it is appropriate because. A phone call, were you representing yourself, were you representing the board, or were you representing Cassuth County?
I'm asking if we can have discussions in regards to the bargaining unit before moving forward with this.
It's the board's decision.
And that's why I called you yesterday to discuss that.
It is the board's decision, this has nothing to do with.
It is the board's decision.
Wages, if the board does not want to grant the road department the Christmas holiday.
I would, I would make a motion to table this agenda item and address it next week, um. Is there, I made a motion, is there a second to that?
I'll second for discussion.
Now for discussion, Roger?
I do have a question, now, if the road department puts it in collective bargaining, that's good for the period of the contract. In other words, it will be for more than one year, correct?
No, I, the way the resolution is written, it is for one day, December twenty-four, twenty-twenty-four.
But if we bargain for it, do we have it in permanent?
For the contract.
I am, the resolution states one day adding December twenty-four, twenty-twenty-four to the. List of paid holidays for the road department, it does not say add Christmas Eve as a paid holiday. It says December twenty-four, twenty-twenty-four.
So we would have to revisit it again next year if it was added again, is that correct?
Just, evidently the board is revisiting things anyway, the collect, I, I believe if you look at the handbook, the employee handbook. It has ten paid holidays in it.
I think in one of the other things I was gonna mention, um, when we looked at the history last week. Um, there had previously been some half-days given and, and a full, a couple of full days, but, um. In the sake of being consistent, I think it should be a change, um. Going forward and that could be, we could do Monday through Friday, like some of our neighboring counties do, if it falls on a weekend.
You're talking about stating in the handbook to kind of read that way.
Well, handbook and secondary road agreement and everything, I don't, I don't know that we need to go through this process every year.
The holidays have to be approved every year, the first meeting of the year, so.
They do have to be approved every year, but if we're, if that's our plan going forward and matching up with previous history. Um, it makes sense to do it once and, and be done with it, we still have.
You're gonna do it every year anyhow, it has to be done every year.
Well, but for the name of consistency and not, not having the discussion.
It is consistent to do it every year, you approve the holidays.
That's what we're doing here.
Well, and the question is whether we're gonna do it every, every year or only on weekdays or, or what, where.
Well, you can make that decision every year.
So, I don't think we need to.
Christmas falls on a different day every year, so make that decision when you come to it that year, we don't need it in the handbook.
Right.
They are updating the handbook, so maybe the ten days can be removed from the handbook and it can just state in the handbook that it will be, holidays will be approved in the first meeting every year instead.
Could not do that too.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, any further discussion on this motion to table? Otherwise, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Okay, motion carries three to one. We will discuss that more next week. Is there anything for construction in the right of way, Doug?
There are no requests for construction within the road right of way.
Okay. And we are up to discussion with the engineer and zoning administrator.
Um, the road department, county engineer's office, we have two more, uh, trips that we need to make on nighttime sign inventory. If we have two crews doing it one night or one, one crew doing it two nights, but we're gonna try to get that taken care of. However, weather forecast again for this week do not look very good for traveling at night, so we'll probably push that off. Uh, we, Cassuth County are part of a safety action plan, a grant that was, uh, administered through the Iowa County Engineers Association. Um, this is part of a notice of funding, the opportunity given with the bipartisan infrastructure bill. Uh, we are bringing, all counties in the state of Iowa are bringing their action plans up to date. And it may allow us to, uh. Receive or be eligible for funding in the future. There will be, we just had one meeting, uh, there will be some, uh, communication going on, I'll try to keep the board, uh, appraised of that. Drainage District Nine, they're, uh, that's a drainage district that has private trustees. They had a meeting, their annual meeting last Wednesday. They are cleaning out, I believe it's lateral six, they're planning to clean out lateral six of that drain. Lateral six contains a metal culvert that was installed in nineteen seventy-three. Uh, it's, uh, just west of the, uh, mouth into the main open ditch. It's going over. Sixtieth Avenue, it goes under Sixtieth Avenue, that culvert is installed high. They have asked, uh, if we would, uh, lower that if they clean it. And I have expressed that I would buy the materials, whoever they have for contractor, we could pay them to install that. So I am doing some work on that, uh, our office is doing some work on that. And then conservation, they are trying to get a grant to get some water, stormwater runoff, uh, detention. And they have asked us to do some work with them as far as planning. Our office again is doing some work for conservation there. Uh, the bridge by Gunter's is closed, we have open positions. Uh, we have a truck that the box, uh, did not last over the winter, it's being repaired right now. We're hoping that it'll be repaired in two weeks, it's a truck out of Laverne. Uh, waste management, we have our annual meeting on January thirty-one, next Wednesday at seven o'clock. And then Michelle Moon, uh, she did not want to travel, so she's gonna do a, uh. Virtual meeting with us at eleven o'clock.
That waste management, was that seven PM or seven AM, just wanted to make.
Seven PM.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Sure.
Um, for health insurance, did she send over any information for you to print out for us?
Yes.
Okay. Any, any other questions for Doug this time?
Uh, one thing, I, I was speaking with, um, uh, Brandon over in Saragordo County, their county engineer.
Brandon Billings?
Yep, and, uh, I was asking him just how they go about, if they've had any trouble with hiring mechanics as well over there and. And, uh, he, he said they use a platform called Jazz HR. And I'm not sure if you were familiar with that or not, but they had.
You just, I was just talking with Brandon as well.
Oh, okay, yep, so he said they received twenty-five qualified applicants when they had posted their mechanic position and had three or four, they ended up considering.
Their HR department, I have no idea what the software is.
Sure, well, I'm just mentioning that, it seemed like they had good success with it, um, might be something worth looking into.
Uh, maybe with the HR department, possibly, I, I have a lot of things going on right now, it's difficult for me to, uh.
I can talk to Donna about it.
But. I, you know, I, that's not one of my duties, I guess, I, I write the job description, I get the advertisement out. But some of that other stuff, it, it, it takes time.
I could talk to Donna about it.
Okay.
I mean, and do you, are you talking to other county engineers, are you, when you call up the county engineers, are you representing yourself as the board of supervisors? Or are you, I guess I'm just curious?
Well, I, we're, we've been without a mechanic's position for two, three years now.
And my question was, are you representing the board of supervisors or are you representing yourself?
Well, representing myself as part of the board of supervisors, yeah, yeah, if you ask Brandon, I.
No, I did not ask Brandon, I was at a meeting with Brandon, we were talking.
Well, I'm saying if you ask him, I mean, if, I'm sure he'll tell you, I called, called him, so. Thought I'd just check around other counties, see what kind of success they were having or not.
All right. You need, you got something going off over there?
Yeah, I've got that, you know, it's coming in and out.
Maybe some IT help is in order.
I don't touch iPads.
It didn't want to hook up this morning, I didn't want to get out of it.
Restart it.
Okay. Um. Anything else for us at this time, Doug?
I do not.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks Doug.
Thank you Doug.
Do you need me to see if Derek's able to come in?
Yeah, just being aware.
He's talking to you now.
Just being aware. Is that nice?
Might be busy. Derek busy, or Roger's having something going with his iPad, I don't know if you want to take a peek at it? See what, see if you can work some magic.
He don't even want to shut off. He good with iPad? It's gonna shut off when you restart it.
Just to confirm, you want to restart this device?
Yes.
Yes. There, finally.
Just to confirm, let it restart this device?
It's good at talking to me. It's been hooking up and unhooking, making noise.
Don't want to roll right into discussion with her.
Your ears coming from that, because when she, hers is hooked up to it, so when she gets an email, it comes to that, so that's what you're hearing is that.
This is good to hold on off.
Yeah.
It's got a mind of its own, Doug.
Okay, so, um.
Evidently it didn't want to shut off.
I did talk to, Kyle and I talked yesterday regarding the email that I sent to, uh, Bridgette at our insurance company regarding, um. The Summit Cabin Solutions lawsuit to I, um, CAP, I had not heard anything back, so I called Bridgette yesterday. And, um, she was in touch with ICAP and it was a good thing that I called her because somehow the email or whatever she sent to ICAP did not make it. So they were not aware of it, so when she called yesterday, they did, um, set us up with an adjuster, his name is Marshall Farcini. And he assured us that legal counsel will be assigned either yesterday or today, I have not heard anything back, so I'm assuming that's still in the process. He did tell me if we had any questions to call him and anytime he does understand our urgency in this as, as the twenty-one days is up next week, so, um. He, they are looking at that and we should, um, be in contact with them today.
Thanks.
Um, I also put a copy of a letter from Farm Bureau on your desks, an invitation for their, um, regular meeting, they'd like you to attend. If, uh, I can let them know the RSVP, if you guys want to let me know if you're gonna be able to attend or not, uh.
March fifth.
March, uh, twentieth is, or I'm sorry, February twentieth is the deadline for RSVP, so if you can let me know by then, I will let them know at Farm Bureau if you're able to attend.
I'll plan on it, I just want to write me down.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll plan on it as well.
Okay, and then you guys can, you're gonna go Roger, okay? And Josh, if you can just let me know?
Uh, you can mark me down though.
Okay, sounds good, I will let them know that thing. And then.
Time is it, six thirty?
Six thirty.
And I'll put that on your calendar, board calendars too. Um, then I got an email from Elizabeth from Gardner and Company on the seventeenth and, um. Kind of just summarize the email, um, I can forward it to you if you'd like, but she said they've had some staffing changes and one of her staff members has had a family medical emergency that's required him to be out for the foreseeable future. And because of that, she was asking if we could ask for an extension, um, for our audit, um, to March. June thirtieth from March thirty-first, um, so I did send a request down to the state, they have, um, requested our extension, so we have been, um, extended to June thirtieth.
They approved it?
They approved it, so I do have a copy of that letter as well, um, but just to let you know that we are getting an extension and that is at the request of our auditing firm because of their hardships at this time.
Staffing.
Yes, so I told her we understood that and, um, she did talk to Ernie Lumen at the state auditor's office and he assured her that the extension request. would not have any negative impact on her firm or on us. So I have a copy of all that information here, if anybody would like to look at it. And then I'm wondering if you guys have come up with anybody to replace Marine Albert on the ICAP board?
Me, I've made a couple calls, but not got any success yet.
Okay, I'll keep bringing it up every meeting, so you guys don't forget.
Keep doing it, yeah.
So, and then as far as next week goes, we have a request from Hat Cock Eye Land Company over ownership of Cassuth County property. I think they're asking for you guys to waive some outstanding taxes on some property that they're interested in. I know Christie's been working with Nick about that, so I don't have a lot of information. But Nick and Christie would have more information if you're interested. Otherwise, I do have a packet here of information if you wanna look at it, otherwise I'll put it in your packets for next week. And then Doug has review and approved secondary road gravel crushing for next week. And then just our regular other business. And I think that is all I have. I will be on vacation from the end of February, one week vacation. The last week in February, I'll be gone the twenty-sixth through the first of March, be back March fourth. Which is just in time for our, so I'm asking all cities, actually the Department of Management has asked all counties and cities to have their budgets submitted to the Department of Management by March fifth. And the reason they're doing that is because the deadline isn't until March fifteenth. But we have to have our mailings out by March twentieth. So all of our mailings to, you know, fifteen, almost fifteen thousand residents has to be done between the fifteenth and the twentieth. So it's not just county, it's school, city, and county that has to be on that mailing. So if everybody has that information by the fifth, that gives us time to get that information together to get it to the company that's outsourcing for us and get it mailed out by March twentieth. So, um, that's what we're looking at there. It's gonna be a very small window, a very short timeframe. So if we can have everybody have their budgets there by the fifth, then we can go to work from the fifth through the twentieth to get that mailing out, so. I did sign an agreement with the same company that Nick uses to do the tax statements that is gonna outsource the mailings for us. Um, and of course, this is all by Iowa code from Senate, House Bill oh seven eighteen, so that's our requirements.
Okay.
And if you have any questions about any of that, come see me, I have all that information in my office, I'd be happy to share it with you. And that's all I have.
Sounds good. Roger, do you have anything for board discussion?
I've got a meeting tomorrow off the road, I see, I probably won't go.
Josh?
I didn't have anything from the last week, but tonight is the emergency management budget hearing at six o'clock. And then I believe we do have nine-one-one, the eight-nine-one-one meeting right after that, so.
Anything else?
Nope.
Carter?
I've got care connections this afternoon. Like I said last week, the state's dissolving care connections and moving to a different system. Is there any questions, specific questions any of you guys have? Um, when I go to the meeting this afternoon that you would like answered, just make sure I ask them.
Is that gonna happen for sure, is that, or is that, it's, it's a legislative thing?
It's a legislative thing that is ninety-nine point nine-nine-nine percent chance it's gonna happen.
The only question I have is budget-wise, if I need to just take that out of our budget, if I need to wait? That's the question I have, is where are we at with that?
Okay, yeah.
Where, where's the money going that's left in your budget?
Right, yeah, what, what are they, how are they tran, how are they transitioning?
Yeah, are they, you know, is there a period where nobody's gonna be financing anything? Or how are they gonna do the switch over? Because we have to have money, if they're gonna do it on a fiscal year, or are they gonna do it at the January?
Fiscal, fiscal versus calendar, yeah.
Fiscal.
Yeah, so we ran into that with, I'm pretty sure it's a fiscal year of next year, or of this coming year.
Be June thirtieth?
Yeah.
So less than six months.
Right. I, I'm pretty sure, but, yeah.
We ran into that with the third judicial when they, when the state took over. They made sure to keep enough in their accounts to be able to pay the bills and, and salaries and stuff up to the point where the state was going to take over. And I think that that was happening, that happened after the fiscal year started. I don't remember exactly all the details on it, but I know that that was one of the things that they had to deal with. And, and the Department of Management kind of helped them with that, surprisingly.
I imagine, I imagine that we'll be giving out grant money as we would till the end of the year. And then that money would just no longer come in, and it would transition into the new region. That's how I imagine it would go, but I-
You're gonna bring them in for Anna Miller or?
Marissa?
Dr. Maris.
Yeah, well, and that's something that we'll need to talk about, too, because that definitely affects her, her position in our budget and, and how we wanna handle that, so. Yeah, definitely something I was gonna bring up this afternoon, so.
Okay.
But that's all I have.
Sounds good, if we got any other thoughts that come up, we can talk on that. For my stuff, I have Isaac University last week. Um, it would have been Wednesday and Thursday. There was four speakers, I thought all of them were, were good. There was, there was one that really stood out to me, though, that I thought would be good for others here in the county, whether it's you guys on the board or the county as a whole, department heads, employees. It was a very good, very good meeting in that regard. So I had actually talked to him yesterday about the possibility of having him come here to Cassuth County. I don't know if that's something we can incorporate with another day, like our day we were talking about closing the courthouse for safety, training and stuff. Or if that day's full, maybe a, a different day.
Actually, that might be good, because Donna was thinking we would only need a half day, so we have a half day left for that. If that's something you wanna do.
Yeah, that would, I think that'd be good, because minimum, well, what he did for Isaac was probably about two hours. But from my conversation with him, we could have some, like workshops, breakout sessions, different, different things that he could do as well. So he said anywhere between a half day and two hours, he could, he could fill pretty comfortably. So, um, if that's-
If that's what you were asking the election center for, maybe the nature center's gonna have the ability for us.
That'd be, yeah, that'd be a little bit bigger, true.
If you needed tables.
Yeah, that's, that was what I was curious about.
They're already set up.
Yeah.
But, but yeah, I, I mean, especially if we do it during, during the workday, I think it would be good for all employees to be there.
What day is the world's most for safety?
I think we're looking, she's gonna bring it back to you.
Oh, right, right, that's right.
I think she's looking at the twenty-first, does that sound right?
February?
I think so.
Something like that.
Okay.
Yeah, we had that discussion.
Yeah, I think it's the twenty-first, if I remember correctly, but Donna would be able to confirm that for sure. And I think she's gonna have it on the agenda next week, so you might wanna talk to her this week, and then both can be on.
I'll plan on talking to her hopefully today. But does anyone have any thoughts on that? Any opposition or?
And his topic was leadership?
Yeah, so I got-
What was it all, entail, what did it all entail, or?
So, I have, I mean, I don't know how you really summarize the whole thing, but, um, the title of it was The Safari Way: Growing Success With The Right Peeps And The Jeep. Um, it was about leadership, and I mean, it, he kept it. There's enough stories and stuff to kinda keep people engaged and, and good topics, but there's some, like five core principles. Um, he talked about, um, some of his work when he was, I don't remember the term for it. Um, actuary, where he studied data on a hundred and fifty thousand global employees. Um, talked about insights for what drives productivity, engagement, and retention. That's, I could-
Be like for leadership and staff development?
Yep, yep, um, it would, I think it'd be very good for the organization here. But yeah, I, I took some notes, and it was, that was, that was one I thought was probably the easiest to apply to the county and, and best bang for a buck, so to speak. Um, there was, there was three others, obviously, the first day was one person in a couple different sessions. And then there was two others as well after on Thursday, but yeah, it was, it was good. If anyone's got any questions that come to mind later, feel free to reach out, but I got I just, I did short summary highlight notes, I got pictures of some of the slides and stuff, too, but it was, it was very good. Okay. A piece of discussion for, for my NACO Ag and Rural Affairs meeting yesterday. Had a speaker that was talking about the BEAD program, which is a broadband program. So right now, he said, I think it's, I think it's actually kicked off and starting, they've been talking about it for a while. But the BEAD challenge process is in, in the works now, and I, states are states are responsible for how they're going to conduct the challenge process. But there's only three, three entities that can actually challenge what's in their reports. And that is local governments, nonprofits, or internet service providers. And what it would actually entail is they did, long and short of it, is they did studies and got reports of internet service that's provided to every location across the country, like the courthouse, every shop down the street on Main Street here in Algonah, every small town, houses, businesses, everything. And in there, it shows what their knowledge of your service is. So if you, if they say your service is good and you say it's terrible, there, this challenge process is the way to say, hey, I need help, so to speak. And since individuals cannot challenge it on their own, I, I don't know what we would do specifically, I guess, but their record, and this was obviously someone that works for the administration in the White House and stuff, but their suggestion was that counties could be a third party to, to help challenge some of those things if, if it came down to that. Individuals could always go to their internet service providers, but if the service provider says, no, your internet's okay, and they still feel it's, it's not, we would be a third party potentially that could challenge on their behalf if they have some data and, and show that they're not getting the speeds that they're advertised. I don't, I don't know that there's a lot of awareness about it right now, so was gonna mention it just for that sake. But then if anyone approaches any of you guys, we can have further discussions about it, I can get in contact with people at NACO, and we can work through that. But just wanted to bring that to your attention a little bit. We also talked about resolutions, which will go in front of the Agri Committee at the Legislative Conference, which is in February, some dates there. February tenth through the thirteenth is the NACO Legislative Conference. The first one was about rural EMS. So the long and short of this resolution is during COVID, CMS or Senator for Medicaid Services, I think it is, did a waiver for what's called tip and tap, it's treatment in place and transport to alternative provider services. During, during that, they collected data and the fiscal impact from those waivers showed that it would save CMS around two billion dollars per year while increasing the revenues for, like our ambulance service and other rural ambulance services. Because we would actually be able to charge insurance for those services that we currently cannot bill unless they are transported. So if a patient refuses transport, we have no, no function of billing for the fuel, the time, staff, all that sort of stuff that it costs to get there and, and, and do nothing. If there's a lift assist or something like that, you can't, you can't do anything. If someone has a, um, goes into diabetic shock, needs, needs insulin. If they can provide that in the home, get the person back in functional health. Currently, they can't bill unless they transport. So, um, we are, we are working to get that incorporated in our NACO policy. I believe the Health Committee is cross-claiming our resolution, but we are the lead on it. There's three others here as well. Another one that would potentially kinda touch base for us would be a resolution supporting the preservation of agriculture and natural resources viability and sustainability in areas of proposed alternative energy production. A lot of this is more focused for out in the West where they're suffering with drought, and it's focused on water. But the, the goal of the resolution is to have better, better communication, better partnership from the federal level with their energy incentives and work with, with locals in regards to siting. The other two more apply to other areas of the nation specifically. And that's a lot of there, but, um, any questions for any of that? Otherwise, we can probably take a, I don't know.
I think our first workshop is at nine o'clock, and they should have had time to fill it out, so we'll print out this.
Okay, well, let's take a ten-minute break here, and then we'll come back and-
We haven't forgotten about that, don't board members, have anybody done any work on that?
I have not.
Oh. We shouldn't slide. We did.
I was just looking at that email from Roger, too, and thinking about that, yeah.
I don't know if anybody, we've had one that was kind of generic, that would send them an email, I haven't seen anything else, anybody else have?
No.
Maybe.
I think that's the biggest, biggest problem, I did ask one other county, but there's, it's kind of an ongoing problem that the towns don't have room.
Right.
And so, what do you do?
Then there is- Yeah, then there is-
There's other ways you can-
Yeah, I mean, the dog is extremely violent, we should have something that we can dispose of it without having endangered the public.
Yeah.
And not having people be worried about getting sued and all that stuff.
Sheriff's Office of-
Well, and this isn't just one person complaining, this is people afraid to get out and visit grandma's grave and go to church and, I mean, it's-
We should do something.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
We just have to give the sheriff's office a tool to use, like you said.
Right. Well, do we wanna put it on next week's agenda for some discussion about it?
Or you can go two weeks and we can do a little research, I haven't found anything other than that one email, I haven't found-
Put it on for two weeks.
Two weeks is fine.
February sixth, okay.
Just to keep it on our radar.
Yeah.
Just want discussion or do I decision?
Discussion should be fine.
Discussion, cause we really don't have anything yet and if we do a discussion, we figure something out, then we can put a decision on the next week, we can come in this time.
It's not that urgent.
Right.
Yep.
Okay.
Just make sure that we do it right.
Yep.
Okay.
It'll probably take a little discussion to get it, get kinks worked out of whatever we look at.
Okay.
So.
Let's, if, I guess, on, on that note, if, if we, we don't have too big of an agenda next week, do we?
Not right now.
Yeah, would it be okay if we put the solar ordinance discussion back on there? Or if, you know, I would just spend a few weeks at that point then for people to have reviewed things.
Do you want just discussion or do you want it decision?
Just discussion, yeah.
Alright. Okay, well, let's take a short break, come back here at nine.
Okay.